Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school board meeting for November 9th, 2010. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ann Mayer.
Here.
Carol Chelman.
Here.
Rebecca Remison.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Clay Haywood.
Here.
Linda Brulette. Savannah Fadaro.
Here.
Yes.
If I could ask you all to rise and join me in the pledge, but I believe we have just for a moment of silence.
Yeah, I'd like to just mention that the passing of Mrs. Luddington, a longtime teacher, librarian of the Portsmouth School System, passed away last week. She was also a neighbor of mine as I grew up in Rye, just down the street, and she raised three outstanding young men that have contributed to the community of the Seacoast. But she was a librarian true to heart, and Betty was a very great person to the Portsmouth School System and never turned down work in working with the children of the Portsmouth School System.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of October 26, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Anybody signed up to speak at the public commentary? Okay. Okay, we have one person, Nancy Stiles, Senate-elect.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I wanted to formally introduce myself. I am the senator-elect from this district, and I wanted to provide you all with my contact information in case anyone wanted to be in touch with me before the legislative session starts.
Okay. Yeah, just leave it here, we'll pass it out.
That's fine.
Was that all, Nancy?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. That closes the public commentary, and we now have public input on one of the draft policies that the school board is considering for pupil safety and violence prevention, bullying specifically. So there's not many people here, so if there's anyone who would like to get up and speak to that, this would be the time to do that. Okay, seeing none, I don't think there's a need for three rounds of nothing. Okay, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, members of the board, in your packet you'll find a number of items for information, including the lunch menu at the elementary schools for the month of November. You have a newsletter from Technology Director Burrell that highlights some of the work that is underway in technology and learning for the school year. The board at its last meeting had requested some data on the number of bullying incidents that has occurred in our schools, and what I have provided you is data that has been reported for the last four years by the building principal to the New Hampshire Department of Education on their school safety survey. The data is in response to this particular question, how many incidents of harassment or bullying were reported this past year, and those are the totals. And so I take some of that data with a grain of salt, insofar as I think there's often, as I talk to the building administrators, some question around how to interpret that, because there's also some specific data collected on harassment, sexual harassment, et cetera. I suspect the survey's going to change with the advent of this new law and how they go about collecting this data. But suffice it to say, it's been under double digits at each of the schools over the last four years. I was also provided, I provided you at the request of some board members, some information from Human Resources Director Fogarty. She's prepared some data that basically looked at if all school employees shifted their plan from the Blue Cross Comp 100 Plan to the Matthew Thornton Plan. She outlined some significant savings for both the employer and the employee, and she notes in her correspondence that she'll set up an open enrollment, set up some meetings to be able to explain the advantages of shifting to that plan. But those are the plans that are provided for within the collective bargaining agreement as it currently stands. I did want to share with you an article. You might remember downstairs at the Little House School, Teacher Representative Brulette wanted to share an article, and I said I would do so. It reinforces some of the steps I think we're taking as a district, and really speaks to the importance of improving teacher effectiveness throughout the district and to focus on the quality of instruction the teachers are able to deliver. You have minutes of this policy subcommittee meeting that took place on October 28, and Mr. Bartlett has provided you basically the tuition rates for both SAU 50 as well the non-area agreement tuitions to be charged to students in this current year. We have two items of correspondence. One is a letter from New Market Superintendent Jim Hayes. He basically thanks Ms. Walker and Mr. LaPage for meeting with them, but he notes that until the moratorium on building aid is lifted, they're in no position to really move forward so that things have essentially been put on hold for the time being. But I think he's most appreciative of the willingness of the board to sit down and have a conversation with him. And then lastly, you have a memorandum of, basically written from HR Director Fogarty to the city manager Bohenko, addressing, I think, a number of issues in light of what we've been reading in the papers regarding the Secretary of State's interim report on the local government center. I think Mr. Bohenko just wanted me to share with members of the board the facts as they were known to the city and present them to all of the boards, operating boards here in the city. That's essentially the superintendent's report. I'm happy to answer any questions or if there's any concerns you may have.
Questions on any items on this list?
I guess the only question that we have is just on the health insurance. I thought that was, you know, that's sort of great, great work to uncover. This is an opportunity. This is going to be sent out to all teachers. How will this be communicated to all, I guess, eligible participants?
So I guess, I guess what I took her to mean was she'll publish a notice, some open enrollment opportunities where, and I think I was talking with Vice Chair Walker about what the advantages might be. So I think to get a little more data about what would be the advantage for me as an employee to make this shift.
Well, I guess that was part of the, you know, there's a sales component.
Absolutely.
And I was just curious, is that?
Yeah, we'll follow up and take care of that.
Okay, great.
Carol?
I just have a comment regarding the article that was in our packet regarding teacher effectiveness, and just wondering if taking from that article, some of the ideas from that, and looking at the matrix that was provided at our last meeting, and trying to include data on teacher effectiveness. It seems like a lot of our data is focusing on how children are doing, specifically on the kneecaps and certain things, and we're looking at cost per pupil. But teacher effectiveness is so important. I think that there should be some data on teacher effectiveness. And I would say some things along those lines would be where are teachers coming from, what schools, are they in the top of their schools, you know, are they the top of their graduating class, how do we recruit teachers, how do we recruit the best teachers, do we have an induction, induction program for our teachers? If we don't, are we working on that? You know, just some ideas that I'm throwing out there. But I just think the article was, raised a lot of good issues, and I think we should sort of incorporate that into what we're doing already.
Kent?
In regards to the correspondence from the local government center, I've seen all the unions make a generalization of comments, some stronger than the others. And I know Linda's not here tonight, but I would request that we find out their feelings. They are our representatives on, on the teachers' union side, plus the other unions we have. And I wish Linda was here tonight, because I would like to know where the teachers stand with the other unions in regards. It would be nice to have this front. If we look at the memo to Diane Fogarty dated June 21, 2010, this is one that is referenced several times in articles where, you know, the police, fire, and municipal unions have made a stand that they feel an unjust has been done. And I believe we feel that as a city, but I have not heard anything from the teachers' union, and I'd like to know where they stand.
Okay. Clay?
I have something to say about the choices that the students have on the program. I'm very impressed with the food that's offered here. It definitely shows that our students are definitely getting their, their daily nutrients. For instance, one day you'll have spaghetti with meat and sauce, or you can have the option of having chicken parmigiana, you know. I'm telling you, if I was a student, I'd have both.
[laughing]
But every day it's something good. And also, I'm very proud of Ann and Kent, and also Superintendent McDonough, with a meeting with the representatives from the New Market School. I'm glad that you welcomed them with open arms and you were willing to talk with them, to open any suggestions and to help that school system. When I was a child, I remember Alverine High School had a fire, and those, those high school students had to go to Nashua. And Nashua bent over backwards to help out that school system, and it worked. So I'm glad to see that we were able to help them out as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else? Thank you very much. So we'll move on to the entertainment thing.
We have some elementary school reports. I thought we'd start with the dean of the elementary school principals, Principal Shea.
Welcome, Dean. You never thought of yourself that you would be the senior member of the...
I think I would be doing the New Franklin two-step. Thank you, everyone, for the introduction, and thank you for having us here tonight. It's been an extremely busy fall at New Franklin, very active in terms of fundraising and school-wide events. We recently competed against the Harlem Wizards with a school team, as well as some community members, administration, and were soundly defeated by these professional basketball players. It's a couple of weekends back, we had our haunted halls of New Franklin, which is put on by the PTO, which was a tremendous community event. Lots of people from all the schools came out. And just last weekend, Portsmouth High School, we had the Seacoast Artisans Craft Fair. So it's been extremely busy, and hopefully things will slow down a little bit, but we have sort of our, our more entertaining, pure entertainment events starting to come up, so that'll be great. Our garden project out front, we've created a garden, tore up a bunch of asphalt, and sort of focused on creating more welcoming front to our building. And I think we've, we're largely completed that project. Well, we're about 75% of the way there. It looks great. There's been a lot of sweat, toil, donations, a lot of sweat from some school board members as well to make that a reality. It's an incredible teaching space, as well as a great place for the New Franklin community to gather, and is a nice foundational point for the greening of our schools. So we're really happy to have it there. There's a Wiki that's in place. I think I put the link in your packet, and that shows some of the kids at work, some of the projects that have been going on, and some of our goals for the, for the site. So, and I think if it's not in this week's packet, since it'll be in your next meeting's packet, the newest New Franklin Gazette has an article about that work as well. Professional development-wise, this summer, a bunch of our teachers went to the Teachers College of Columbia, where they learned a great deal about the effective practice of interactive read-aloud for their literacy programs. And that's something that we've been working on as a staff. Specialists have been training our staff at each second staff meeting of every month. Teams have been developing read-alouds and modeling the form for each other, and then improving upon each other's work. And so that was been, that's been an exciting new addition to our literacy program. I think I was also asked to update on PLC implementation. Our PLC teams are at full steam. We meet again tomorrow morning, 7:30. And most teams are in the process of completing their first intervention cycle of assessment and intervention in reading and math. I think I put, I just pulled one SMART goal specimen. I think it's a second grade one somewhere. Just as a, just as an illustration of what we do, generally, we, we take our power standards and develop common assessments around them, administer the common assessments after we've instructed kids, and determine who needs additional help, who's in a place where they can have enrichment, and then plot a course for that and set goals and, and deploy those interventions. So it's become fairly habitual and standard behavior. It's, it's not necessarily newsworthy, but I thought I'd give you something to show, show you what goes on. So something new in our PLC processes is we've added grade one to our intervention block system this year. Most of that work in grade one is around literacy. Teams have, literacy and reading is such a, such a monolithic idea that we've sort of broken down chunks of it and sort of tried to take pieces that we can assess and work on. Most groups are doing intervention courses around word study and vocabulary and structure of words. So I think, I don't know if I put the grade three SMART goal, I actually didn't. But that's what a lot of the early, the early-level teams are working through in their initial PLC process is, the literacy work. Tech integration has been going very well. We, we have a new setup this year, and I know that looks a little bit different in all the schools just because of our different structures. In our school, we have a library media specialist, technology integrator. She has an extremely long title, and Sarah Zoe Patterson. And in her role, we've found with our new model, we have just a lot more opportunity for, for authentic tech integration, where a teacher can say, here's something I'm working on, here's what I want to do, can you help me get there? And, and developing a map for our portfolio projects, it's great to have her onsite to be able to do, to realize that work. There are restrictions, of course, in terms of time. Some of her librarian positions, she has trouble with processing materials and things like that, that I think has fallen on the library. But we're working through that with the paraprofessional help as well. But with the new structure, our students get, still have one computer class, three, for a third of the year for a trimester, one hardwired computer class. Other than that, it is work that's done with the teacher in the classroom, integrated into their, their daily instruction. We also, it's because of the change in the computer lab schedule, it's freed up the computer lab, which has been wonderful to see now that teachers have access to that, that we're not, it's not filled with scheduled classes all the time, and it's, it's filled. It's filled with music. The, our fourth grade tries to just own the entire place. They're in there constantly working on projects, and it's just wonderful to be able to have that resource on an as-needed basis, whereas before, a lot of times, that technology wasn't available to us. We do still have the netbooks and the laptops as well, but it's nice to have a fixed lab that teachers can turn to. So, and I think also, we're working on getting portfolio projects submitted for each grade level this year as per the state education regulations. And I think I put a calendar of where our projects are all going to be throughout the year. That's something that we put out for just our personal planning purposes with each grade level. We took one project and tried to develop it. We did that in June, and since then, it's been tweaked a bunch, obviously, because it was a little academic now, and it's a little more reality. It was academic then, and it's a little more reality now. And I think they've gotten better than what you may see before you. They're, you know, as teachers get in there, and we have the library media specialist around as a resource, she really can help them bring up their game. So I don't think in the June, we realized how helpful that could be back then. So that's there. Let's see, coming up in New Franklin, things to go on? Let's see. I just wrote "teaching and learning" only because in the post-kneecap era here, teachers are extremely enthusiastic about teaching. So it's, it's an extremely energized community right now, and it's just great to see people have that behind them, and the gloves are off, and there's some extreme teaching going on. So that's great. We're also working on lesson study in mathematics. This is just a process wherein teachers pick a particular lesson that they want to focus on, a team does, and they evolve that lesson. One teacher instructs it, the team meets and looks at ways that they can improve the instructional side, or it's, it's the differentiation, or its impact on students, and then the next person does it again. At least that's the way I think we're going to try it. And they replicate the lesson, but each one's a version 2.0, and then a version 3.0, until finally, you have the alpha version of that lesson. So it'll be a really interesting process to see evolve. We have some of our teams that are just starting this now, so it's exciting to look forward to. Upcoming, this says Family Math Night, December 9. Our, our school-wide team met yesterday, and that's now Literacy Night, just so everybody knows. And it's, it's a, it's a wordplay extravaganza, which sounds so much more exciting than Family Math Night anyway, but it's a wordplay extravaganza December 9. Come on out. And finally, I just hetero- cryptozoology calendars are coming out, so, and if you don't know what cryptozoology is, then you must not be familiar with our mythology power standards, which is cryptids are hidden or legendary beasts, such as Sasquatch or Loch Ness monsters. And the fifth grade puts out a calendar every year, will feature these as part of their nonfiction and slash fictiony writing. So you can ring in the new year with Yeti or something like that, so look for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Are we taking questions?
Questions?
Yes, Ms. Walker, sorry.
George, I was curious to know, now that you have a new format in your technology, if you have, just off the top of your head, average, how many times teachers are able to take their class to the lab when it's, I know everyone has to sign up, I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm. Like I said, the fourth grade seems to dominate this year, and music class...
That's good.
They're in there, yeah, I know. And it's an open lab, we have an online signup, so the lab is there. A lot of the integration work is done actually in the classroom with the netbooks or the iBooks or iPod touches that we've been working with a lot.
So that's working well?
Yep, it seems to work pretty well. And it's early, and we have a schedule for that as well, where the integrator is set to, to work with those classes. It tends to be a little more three-through-five focused, her work on those projects, but we do have that calendar that's going to make sure that she gets to each of those classes to help them K through five as well.
Right, thanks.
Kent?
George, you make one mention under your item number three, and this is going to be for all three elementary principals. And it's a curiosity of, with this report, a year ago, your budget was much different. You, we all suffered across the board some reductions. And under your number three, bullet number four, you say challenges of the library clerical work time. What, what does that mean, and what else, if the budget had gone through the way the board had desired to make sure that we weren't sliding behind, what do you see that we lost? Because I'd try to have some of this discussion, because, you know, the tea leaves, the crystal ball, and the tobacco spit on the sidewalk, all don't look favorable for next year, so.
I think you left out the chicken entrails as well, everything. Okay. It, I think, instructionally, we've been able to protect a lot there. But this is the clerical work of, I think we lost the person that used to catalog and process books. So that said, the librarians are doing that now, and I was, that was mentioned to me as a, as a stressor in terms of time, and it's always time taken away from something else. So, you know, I guess that can't be, I don't know a ton about it, I got to say, can't be offset to someone else necessarily. It's a pretty methodical process, and she mentioned that as one limitation of her job this year.
Any other reductions that you saw that, you know, budgetary from there? I mean, yeah, we're honest, that's not giant, that's not earth-shattering.
Right.
And that's good, because maybe we did do the right thing. But other things that you see?
I think, I think as we spoke about last budgetary season, we were able to protect our core, and I think we did a lot to make sure that happened. And so instructionally, again, I feel like we're in a, we're in a good position because that core remains intact. I don't, you know, while district-wide, I think we've had some, a lot of compromises because of the budget, I think the instructional core is, is still extremely sound.
Glad to hear it. Thank you very much. Other questions?
I'm sorry. Just a quick question, George. On the media specialist, you know, does she come with some unique knowledge? I mean, you sounded very excited about the fact that she's really doing some great work, and just wondering, I mean, does she, you know, that was one of the things that we had looked at last year, was the fact that we thought that we might be losing some knowledge, because we're sort of combining and crushing a bunch of things in and pushing it off to the library specialist. But this woman sounds pretty good.
She's phenomenal. And I think it's, I think it's because she's a product of a modern library media specialist program, perhaps, where she has very strong technology skills, understands that collaboration is key... understands that collaboration is key, and I'm not saying this, that anyone else doesn't know this, I'm just saying, these are the attributes I see that are successful, understands that collaboration is key to integration, understands that when you work with a teacher, sometimes it's just doing one great project, that's an exemplar, often others will then follow. I think you don't have to, you know, sweep the entire building and do everything at once. I think you look to build positive relationships, build good models of excellent practice, and everyone else will follow, and I think she's a real practitioner of that.
Great, thanks.
Sarah Zoe Patterson is my plug for her, she's very good, thank you.
So I just have two quick questions. So you were saying that the fourth grade, for example, is dominating the computer lab whenever it's available?
Yes.
So could you just give me, just throw out a couple of quick ideas of what kinds of projects they're actually getting their hands dirty doing?
Yep. They, when, it's, in our building, it's also a little bit geographic why fourth grade has it, they're all right around it, so they can poke their head around the corner and say, is it open? I don't have to go to the online calendar and check, you know, they can just actually run in there a little bit easier than some. They've been doing a lot of work around, around their New Hampshire projects, which is a course of the fourth grade science or social studies curriculum. I believe they've also been diagramming AL pellets, which isn't very attractive, but I think that's what they've been, that's something that they've been doing recently as well. And there's some other sites that they've done around mapping, I believe, also recently, using Google Maps and Google Earth to do different projects. So I haven't been that precise, and I've just been looking over she kid's shoulders a little bit, so.
And then one other quick question, so this idea that you're saying that's coming up, this lesson study, so it hasn't been, it hasn't happened yet, but you're going to do it this year?
Yes, and we have a calendar for that as well, and that's something that we're being, it's being facilitated by Mr. Zadovac and Susan Dees and Kathy Dunn, some of our consultants are helping us work through that, and we have leaders in each building that have a range of grades that they're focused on making sure that that process carries through. And, yeah, we have a calendar for who goes when.
This idea came from where?
It's, it's full title is Japanese Lesson Study, and it has a very long, real Japanese name. Mr. Zadovac, would you like to attempt that? And it's been something that, that we've looked at a couple times before, and I think have even, even done informally a little bit, the idea of taking a lesson and one teacher teaching it, someone on their team, the team critiquing, looking at that work and looking to enhance it the second time around, and so on. And taking a focus area, looking at an area that's either a deficit in the assessment outcomes and sort of working on that, or teaching a segment of students, focusing on a segment of students that they may feel they may not have hit, and targeting that. And I may be doing it a little bit of an injustice, but I'm trying to give the quick and dirty. And, but it's been around for some time.
No, it sounds like a great idea. The only, part of the only reason I asked is, you know, there's some new software that's around called Studio Code, I don't know if you've heard about it, but it's a video program that allows you to tag behaviors, and it's used a lot now by teachers, tagging sort of instructional behaviors as a way to analyze what teachers are doing. So it just sounds like a possible.
Wow, so you, I'm not going, we'll talk later.
Okay. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And now next would be our next longest veteran, Mr. Grossman from the Little Harbor School. Welcome, Mr. Grossman.
Thank you Superintendent McDonough, thank you school board members. I know that you're reeling in shock right now to think that I'm the second most senior. I'll try to hold things together. It's been, it's been a great year at Little Harbor. Got a lot of exciting things going on. A few of the things that I talked about tonight, the nature conservancy and UNH has developed a program where they invited people to be host sites for oysters. Oysters were once plentiful in Great Bay, their population has declined. Oysters function kind of as a filtering mechanism to any body of water and contribute to the overall health of the body of water. And so Janine Beck, one of our kindergarten teachers, signed on as a host site. So at the end of the Little Harbor dock, for the first couple months or so of the school year, we had a cage filled with oyster shells with baby oysters attached to them. And those oysters, those baby oysters and oyster shells need to be cleaned regularly. And so classes throughout Little Harbor signed up to go out and clean the shells, and then did a whole host of different activities connected with those. Measuring the oyster shells over time, making observations about the oyster shells, learning about how they worked, and so on and so forth. It was just a fantastic, it was great to be out at the end of the dock, clustered around with a bunch of second graders, you know, cleaning oyster shells and so forth. It was great. Another great thing happening this year, we are hosting about seventeen Ed 500 students at Little Harbor. Ed 500 is a class called Exploring Teaching at UNH. It's a, it's an interesting class because it's actually kind of a, an initial class for students who are considering whether they want to go into teaching. So they're at the beginning of considering whether they want to be in a teacher preparation program. And so Stacy Weeks, one of our fifth grade teachers, and I had met with Tom Sharam from UNH last spring and over the summer. And so we're hosting these seventeen students, they come in for about five hours a week to help out in the classrooms. And aside from the obvious benefits of having an extra pair of hands, there's something, I don't know if it's intangible, but there's something really energizing that we get from having these young people in, who are really fresh to the profession, look at it with a new set of eyes, have a lot of questions. I was in Julie Wood's kindergarten classroom today, talking with a couple of Ed 500 students about how, you know, we integrate science instruction and social studies instruction, and it's a really different audience, and it really adds something to our community. We were fortunate, Tracy Hille, who works for Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare, she's a Little Harbor parent, and she brought to my attention a mini grant that we could apply for, and so with Tracy's help, we applied for the grant, won a thousand dollar grant for our interactive whiteboards. Another little piece we claw forward, I know that a couple of weeks ago, you saw a great presentation by our second grade team, and I think you know from that, that the great majority of whiteboards at Little Harbor have been purchased in this way, with small private donations, PTA funds, grant writing by teachers, and so on and so forth. So nice opportunity, another piece of the puzzle to move us forward in the technology front. And finally, we recently had Fall Fest, which is just a fantastic community event, with games, raffle, food, and some staff humiliation, which I think was the highlight of the event for most of the people present. But what we're really proud of is that, I think in a challenging economy, our revenue was up, our attendance was up, and it's just a great, a great way to get all the people together. As far as PLC work, kind of the, I don't want to call it a saga exactly, but the story of our PLC work at Little Harbor this year starts at the end of last year. At the end of last year, we saw two challenges at Little Harbor. First of all, we were newly identified as a school in need of improvement. Second of all, we knew that we'd be losing Title One, which on the ground meant that we'd be losing three paraprofessionals who served fifty-five students in supporting them in their reading, students who were below grade level but were not identified for special education. These are the challenges that we faced coming into this year. So we sat down on the last day of school last year, the last staff day, looked at our DRA data, looked at our kneecap data, and started to come up with a plan, which we continued to develop over the summer, and putting our school in need of improvement plan together for the state. And what we wanted to do this year, the staff at Little Harbor really likes to work as a cohesive unit, and so we really tried to come up with what we've kind of taken, I think actually, I've just come to take, taken to calling it an umbrella goal. So one unifying goal, that we're all working together, although it may look different at different grade levels due to the needs of that cohort of kids, or due to the developmental needs of that age group. And so when we looked at, both in the DRA and particularly our kneecap data, if you look across in the kneecaps, for instance, certain strands, content strands, and one of the things you're looking for is there's some area that we fall down in dramatically, vocabulary for instance, or comprehension and so forth. And actually, across both special ed and regular ed, we were remarkably consistent. What we did notice is that we tended to do more poorly, and this is true of the developmental reading assessment as well, we tended to do more poorly constructed response questions or open response questions that needed a more substantial answer. So they weren't necessarily multiple response, multiple choice questions, but they required several lines of writing or a small paragraph writing or a retelling in the DRA. And so we geared our professional development this year and our PLC work with that in mind. And so one example of a PLC goal that I included here, that is one grade level's interpretation of that goal, was the fourth grade. So by the end of the year, students will write a one paragraph response to a literal comprehension question in reading with eighty-five percent scoring threes or fours on a content rubric with three supporting details from the story. Now, for instance, what kindergarten is doing in this regard is quite different, because of course, kindergartners, when you want them to respond to reading, they're not typically able to respond with great depth through writing. So our kindergarten team has been working with developing kindergartners' oral response to what they read, and developing that oral response, because it's a key indicator to strong reading skills later on. So of course, it looks different at each grade level. You know, at Little Harbor, we had really geared up towards literacy instruction because of the challenges that we faced going into this year. And then at some point, I think Steve's out of it, kind of looked over his shoulder at me and said, oh, by the way, you have to do math goals for next year too. So we wanted to figure out a way to integrate our math work in some way with our literacy work. And actually, our math work has come out of the work that Georgia referenced on the Japanese lesson study, some of the work we've been doing with Susan Dees and Robin Burdick and Kathy Dunn. And they actually eventually were the ones who articulated this overall goal of helping students to articulate their math reasoning, which as you can see, is kind of like a mirror image of what we're doing in literacy. And so that's become the guiding principle on the, on the other side, on the math side, to the work that individual teams are doing in math. And one example of that was our fifth grade goal. By May 2011, students will improve their ability to communicate their mathematical thinking on open response questions. Eighty-five percent of students will score fifteen out of twenty or better using the math prompt open response rubric developed by our grade level team. And so those two, the literacy goals and the math goals are kind of different sides of the PLC coin, and we really feel like we're working together as a whole school on these and not working at cross purposes this year. So I think we feel great about our PLC work and about our CINEE plan this year. In the realm of technology, as I said, I know that you saw the second grade presentation a couple of weeks ago. So what I wanted to highlight to you a little bit was the digital portfolio work that Karen Crowley, our tech teacher, is doing this year. And technology looks quite a bit different at Little Harbor than it does in the other schools. Little Harbor grew considerably again this year, we have just under four hundred and seventy students. And so I worked with Karen and the rest of the staff last spring, and Steve, at all kinds of different schedules to come up with a model where Karen could be out in classrooms alongside teachers, and it wasn't possible to take Karen out of that related arts rotation. We simply can't have a viable schedule without her in there, teaching a full load of five classes a day, every day. And so we developed a model where Karen is collaborating with the teachers, really whenever she can find time, whenever they can find time, before school, after school, lunch, planning periods and so forth. And they already had projects, which they collaborated on. And so the effort this year has been to develop those projects further, deepen those projects with an eye towards the ITSE standards, and some of the teacher, or the teachers will be giving up some of their planning time to come into the lab to work alongside Karen in culminating events within those projects. So right now, the first grade team and Karen are working towards concluding the digital portfolio project for the first grade. The first grade has had for some years a little piece they do with, beginning of the year with the students, where the students express their hopes and dreams for the coming year. They do a picture of themselves and who they are, and they do a picture and a short piece of writing about what they'd like to learn for the coming school year. And so Karen and the teachers have worked together to kind of expand this project so that the kids still do that work in the classroom, but then they take a digital picture of the work they've done in the classroom, they bring it up to the computer lab, they reinterpret it on the computer, and then they are going to be doing an audio reflection on the work that they've done on the computer, and comparing the work they've done on the computer with the work they've done in the classroom. So that's just one of the examples of the work that Karen has been doing with the teachers, and it's been great. Karen has always, despite teaching a full load of technology classes, she's always been able to make herself available to support teachers in the school. And what's great is, as you know, with the infusion of technology at Little Harbor this year, you have a lot of teachers who are really excited about some of the new devices that we have, and they are developing products on their own. So kind of like what Mr. Shea had said, we actually have a schedule in place, but as I talk to Karen and I talk to teachers, there's, these projects are in flux, because they're constantly talking about what they might be able to do, and thinking, well, maybe this would be a better digital technology, a digital portfolio project. So it's an exciting year for technology at Little Harbor. As far as what's coming up, every year we have this, but it just started, and I put it out to staff, and Steve Schulten said, well, it's always good to mention swim safe, it's a great program, it's a great opportunity we have at Little Harbor, where Steve goes over each Wednesday over to the high school with a third grade class, it's a rotation, and the kids essentially take swim lessons. Hope Martin, who's one of our parent volunteers, supports Steve in that. It's a great opportunity, some of the kids might not have otherwise. Our Little Harbor Book Fair is coming up, November 29th to December 3rd. Danny Megliola and Andrea Allen, two Little Harbor parent volunteers, are really making effort this year to work with us to kind of increase the student involvement in the book fair, one of the things that we're looking to do. We have a preview day where the kids come down and look at the books and make lists, and so we're looking to have the fifth grade facilitate the first grade on that preview day, and to kind of assist those kids and work with those kids as they kind of go through and make lists of titles that they might be interested in. And then finally, this on the very early end of this, but we've just been talking about, it's kind of an exciting project. Christina Rogers, another great Little Harbor parent, brought to our attention, it's a program by the American Institute of Architects, and it's a program where students use cardboard boxes, and they cut them down, and they, they shape them and change them, and they arrange them in patterns, and they create scale replicas of buildings and scale replicas of cities. So we have an architect coming to meet with our fourth and fifth grade teachers and myself and Christina, I think on December 3rd, to kind of put this project into place. So just another, I think, kind of interesting and exciting opportunity, and like a lot of the things at Little Harbor, something brought to us by one of our great parent volunteers.
Thank you, excellent. Questions? Kent?
Actually, I have three. First of all, under your first item, oyster conservation, when are they ready?
When are they ready?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so actually, I think something, I think I.
I love my raw oysters, a little bit of sauce.
You're missing the point, Ken. Actually, so what I actually left out is what they do is, after so many, so many weeks, I'm going to say six or eight weeks, I think, the oysters are expected to reach a level of maturity, and so then they're actually, they're taken from the host site, and they're brought out to a reef in Durham. And they are brought out and put on the reef where they continue to grow and flourish and avoid people like yourself.
So when I get my license, you'll let me know which.
Ethical treatment.
Just ask him over at Robert's Restaurant, someday I'm taking on the challenge. Second question I have is, and I had some involvement last spring, and I think they've done a great job at the pool with the SIP committee, and I really encourage, and I hope that we can take two things out of swimming. One is physical health. One of the best ways, I could use it on a regular basis, but swim safety, also then prevention of drowning and how to help others that might be in distress and so forth. And I just think with the population of the schools that we have, it's a shame that we don't have a higher membership of students going there. So I encourage, I applaud, I know Steve's been doing this for a number of years, with the pools plural in town. the pools plural in town, because I believe actually when he started, he may have been, I think he did some stuff, we did stuff with the YMCA many years ago. So, I, again, applaud, and I hope we take this opportunity to support the pool in some manner through the parents and getting kids over there on a regular swimming basis.
Well, I think one of the things, Ken, is that Steve, one of Steve's real strengths is that he does a great job of connecting what the kids do in gym class and how it is important and relevant to the rest of their lives and the way that they can kind of carry that out of gym and out of the school to the rest of their lives, whether it's sportsmanship or flexibility, all those different concepts. That's something that Steve hits again and again and again and again, and I think SwimSafe is a more obvious example of that.
He's a great teacher. I mean, it's horrible for me to say this, but I actually had Steve Shulten as driver's ed, so. Not the wife yet. And my last question is the same question that I have for George is, where are you hurting? Where do you see that, you know, last year's budget, and I know we're only a couple of months into the school year, but again, what do you see that may be putting strains on because we're in the middle of discussion at this period of time almost?
Well, I actually, to a certain point, I would echo what Mr. Shea had said. I know that we're fortunate to have our own librarian, but again, because of our size, just like the technology teacher, Kelly teaches a full load of courses throughout the day. We lost the clerical person who supported librarians, particularly at Little Harbor. She was housed at Little Harbor. This is additional clerical work. And, you know, and Kelly looks like a teacher. I mean, she teaches all day long. She's not a librarian kind of waiting for kids just to come in and check out books. So, I know that, I've had conversations with Kelly, and that's been challenging for her. She feels like it's taking away from her job. You know, the issue at Little Harbor, quite frankly, I'd echo Georgia's assertion that we protected the core, but unfortunately, in some regards at Little Harbor, we ended up with forty more students this year. We just have a lot of kids at Little Harbor. And while we look back to the beginning of the budget process, things certainly could have turned out a lot worse because we were successful in advocating for the core. In some grades, our class sizes are edging up there. In kindergarten, our class sizes are certainly reasonable. They tend to be somewhere around eighteen, nineteen students. In 1st grade, however, they are consistently in the low twenties. 2nd grade, we were able to play, it's a very large group of kids. Up until earlier this year, it's our largest group of kids. We have about, I think, eighty-three kids in 2nd grade. So, we have five teachers there and we're able to keep nice, small class sizes, sixteen, seventeen students. But in 3rd grade, we're back to the low twenties. And 4th and 5th grade have really been somewhat challenging. In the 4th grade, we have, it's ebbed and flowed as kids have come and gone. We've had anywhere between twenty-one and twenty-three students in those classes. And in 5th grade, we only have three teachers, just like last year. We've had twenty-three or twenty-four teachers, twenty-three or twenty-four teachers in each classroom, yes. Twenty-three or twenty-four kids in each classroom. And that's felt like a lot, with the same number of paraprofessionals and the same number of teachers. So, you know, on the ground, things look great. When you walk through the building, you're not initially aware of the increased numbers of students. But, you know, sometimes when the rubber hits the road and we talk about trying to differentiate instruction and group students, it makes it harder. And so, that's kind of the story at Little Harbor.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Rebecca.
I just have a question. How is the SwimSafe program funded?
I believe that we have a, I don't know, the only expense is the bus. And I can't recall how the bus is funded right off the top of my head.
Okay.
Other than that, there's no cost to us.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anne?
Mine's really more of a comment. I was happy to see that one of your goals was for having the kids communicate their mathematical thinking because kids hate to do that. They absolutely hate to do that. They want to say, "Oh, I just know. I just know." And you said, "You need to know why and thinking." And once they really see how much more credit they get with the scoring of the test, that seems to make a difference. So, that's a great goal.
Well, I think we've also found that it's a really important step in having students, especially as they apply a basic concept in more challenging work. It's a really important step before they get to the pencil and paper part of it. If they can articulate it orally or in writing and really reason out the application of the concept, then as the work gets more challenging, they're in a better position to apply it successfully.
And especially hearing how someone else thought it through that was different from the way they were thinking.
And that's actually, you might have seen it, I think, in the presentation, but when you think about how the SMART boards are used, it's just remarkable, too. I see it a lot. I see it pretty much every day, and I'm still kind of amazed. The speed with which you can do that and turn those problems over and have the students articulate their thinking is really tailor-made to that kind of instruction. It's a good example of how those boards are a really valuable tool and not just kind of a novelty or a gimmick.
Yeah, true.
I have a couple of, just a couple of quick little questions. So, it seems like one of the things I'm going to learn at the end of the night is every elementary school this year might have a different-looking technology library person model, you know, probably due to money and necessity. So, your person is teaching a full load.
Correct.
So, could you tell me a little bit about, a couple of things? What is it that they're actually teaching? So, is there a curriculum that's devised by her? Or is it a curriculum that is, was created throughout the building by other, by teachers altogether? And is there serious, realistic, authentic collaboration between the technology teacher and the classroom teacher in co-designing the projects that are happening in the tech lab?
So, I would say that primarily, the curriculum is something that was designed by her. But as I said, these projects have kind of predate this digital portfolio piece. So, like, the 5th grade has always done work with Karen on their living history museum, for example. Kindergarten has always done, I'm sorry, 1st grade has always done work on the rainforest project with Karen. So, there's been a lot of crossover in that regard with the classroom teachers. In terms of authentic collaboration, there absolutely is a lot of authentic collaboration in terms of the planning of the projects and the discussion of what the kids will be doing in the classroom, in some cases with technology, and in some cases with classroom content, and also what the kids will be doing in the computer lab, kind of the flip side of that, because they're bringing the classroom content into the computer lab. And also, Karen is able to do work in the computer lab that the teachers wouldn't be able to do in the classroom necessarily, just because she's there with all the computers.
So, the computer teacher and the teachers are talking?
They're absolutely talking. The struggle that we found, and I don't feel as badly about as I did when we first started this process, the real headache, when you couldn't find a schedule that kind of had Karen working physically alongside the teachers. I think we've largely mitigated that because there's just a lot of conversation, and a lot of that conversation, as I said, is just throughout the day, with teachers in and out of the computer lab, meeting with Karen at lunch and planning times. But also, as I said, it's going to look a little bit different in each project, but with each project, there's going to be, I'll call it a culminating activity, it's probably a little bit grandiose, but there is going to be a piece where the teachers target sometime, give up their planning time, which is when Karen has those, has their kids, and go into the computer lab to work alongside her. So, I mean, our model, our unique model brings some strength. It's great to have the kids exposed to the computers on a regular basis, in addition to the technology they're exposed to in the classroom, but it does make some aspects of that collaboration a little bit more challenging.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well? Please join me in welcoming our junior principal, our newest member from the Donidero School, Ms. Kate Callahan. Welcome, Kate.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm going to start by apologizing that I missed the first meeting in September, and I'm blaming it on Charlie and George for not reminding me and inviting me. So, life at Donidero was going really well. Obviously, I'm new, so with somebody coming in new, there's a lot of change and there's a lot of positive energy. And I think one of my biggest highlights has been the support from our parent community and really having them embrace me, but also embrace the greatness of our school. I had Bob Santulli, who owns a sign company, got together with another parent, Bob Ricard, and we now have a new sign outside of Donidero School that welcomes the outside community to our building, as well as informs them of all the great things that are happening inside. He's also been kind enough to commit to changing the letters for me on a weekly basis, so that's been great. With the initiative of the 5-2-1-0 that started with Mr. McDonough, we have formed a garden committee and a group of parents have come to weed the garden that is in between the two wings of Donidero. And from there, I had a 4th grade teacher come to me and say, "Years ago, we once did composting." And so, what has happened is our head custodian, Mr. Cook, he has worked with students to build a compost. And so, we had a person from a garden committee come in and talk to the students about composting. And so, this week, what has happened is the lunch program is now being fed, they're being served, and the students are learning what they can compost and what they can't compost. And from there, our 4th grade students will then go to the other classrooms and inform students on, again, the whats and the whatnots and the whatcans, and go room to room to bring everyone on board. The goal is to have this in place by the end of December before the break so that when we come back in January, it's in full operation. So, that's been wonderful. The next piece to this is getting that compost to be part of the soil for the garden come spring and do some planting and tie that back into some of this initiative. We also have had great support from the PTA and to support some of our technology, they have purchased three Promethean boards for us. And so, in grades five, I have two Promethean boards, which is for the two classrooms, and now I have three Promethean boards in grade four. So, that's been a great support. They've also purchased document cameras for grades three, actually for 3rd and 2nd grade so that we can do some of our interactive read-alouds using a document camera to share out so we can do a whole group instruction. We've also spent some time looking at those students who actually excel. And so, I have a group of parents who have taken the EDM curriculum, the Everyday Math Curriculum, and created some extensions so that we can support those students who need to be challenged. And so, they've started with grade three, and then they're going to go to grade two and grade one, and eventually, grade four and five. They have students in grades two and three, so that's where their focus has been. And we participated in the South End Ferry Tour, and so, we were kind enough to receive, I think all three schools were, a donation of a thousand dollars for environmental schools, so that will be a huge help to our 5th grade team. Like both New Franklin and Little Harbor, we are also in the process of working on PLC work. Coming in new, I didn't know where the school was or where they had started from, so I really took the initiative of laying it out and talking in great detail about the work that Rick and Becky Dufour had put forth and created some strong SMART goals. And being a school in need of improvement in not only reading, but also math, we needed to put some emphasis in both areas. And so, through a lot of professional development during faculty meetings, during late start days, I had math consultants come in, both Susan Deese and Ann Mordecai and Robin Burdick, as well as some of our reading specialists, to help work with individual teams on really coming up with SMART goals that they felt that they could attain. In addition, we looked at not only talking about the students who were below, but again, those students who are on grade and making sure that they're making a year's growth. And so, you can see the grade three example of not only are we looking at the students who will read on grade level, but also, again, making that growth. Or also, looking at it from the perspective that a child who is two years behind in reading may not be at the end of that grade, but we still want them to work hard to get up to where they need to be. Math has been a huge focus on looking at the different strands within math. We noticed that numbers and operations from grades three through five was an area of weakness. And so, we've brought it down to starting to implement some of that work in Kinder, as well as 1st and 2nd, so we can start to look at the linear component and building that foundation so that when students get into 3rd grade, some of those challenges hopefully won't be as great. Communicating their math skills has been a huge piece. Donidero School has taken the responsive classroom approach for some of our management and focusing on the social emotional components of children. And so, there's a book that was recently published called Doing Math in Morning Meeting. And so, all teachers were given that book at the beginning of the year. And what that is, is it creates a problem for math, and then there's a conversation. So, depending on the teacher and depending on the grade, they may present that on a Monday, give students time to talk and think about it and share with each other, and then report out on a Wednesday. Some other students or some other teachers are doing it first thing in the morning and then closing with that activity in the afternoon. So, that's been a great, I guess, reality to see. Alex is a web-based software program that we recently purchased, and we have twenty licenses for this. And what we are going to do is target some of those students who aren't qualified, who haven't qualified for special ed services, but who also aren't making the grade, so to say. And so, what it is, is it's a program that aligns with the state GLEs, and it's time on task, and there's graphing, there's each of the strands, teachers can print out reports. We can do some assessment work with that. And so, those licenses actually came today, so that will be up and running hopefully in the next few weeks. With that, we're also going to do some interventions before and after school and hopefully to use Alex for some of those students who just can't do it with a paper and pencil, but can be drawn into the computer and given support one-on-one through some teacher support. I guess the integration of technology is a hot topic, and so, I had my computer teacher, technologist move from the lab into the library. And so, her taking on that new role has definitely been a challenge, but she has also come a long way in the past three months of really figuring out the time balance of how much time she needs to put into the library media center and how much time she can put into the lab. And with support from her paraprofessionals, she has created a great system for the card cataloging, which was a challenge at the beginning, finding, you know, how to put students in the right book, helping them check out books and return them, and then also finding a balance on helping teachers integrate technology into the classroom. And so, she spent this summer working with some of our grades four and five teachers with the Promethean boards and creating some lessons. So, what I've had her do is really follow up with that to make sure that what they've learned through the summer is actually being a practice in the class. So, she spends a great deal of time in grade four. She also teaches everyday class of 1st graders. And so, the thought there was, in order to get it into their schedule, let's give them the foundation so that when they get into 2nd and 3rd grade, there's an awareness for some of the basic keyboarding skills, an awareness of some of the basic computer operations, with the hope that 2nd grade will then be that much easier for teachers to integrate and implement. As you can see on the paperwork that I left with you, she did create a digital portfolio project with some teachers, actually with all the teachers. And so, this is really their framework. And the idea is that some of this will change or grow over time. And so, grade five, in addition to working with her, has also created their own website, and they're trying to do some blog work. And so, her goal is to really be a facilitator, but not be the leader. Where some of the other grades, some of the teachers have come forward and said, "I really need some more assistance." And so, finding that balance has definitely been a trick, but it's working, and I'm honoring teachers for asking for that help rather than pushing it aside and saying, you know, "We'll get to it in May, which becomes June, which becomes never." So, you can see, we're up and running there. I think some highlights or some things to look forward to, we, like I said, the PTA has been really strong. Tomorrow night, we have a barn dance, and so, that's for the art teacher, the phys ed teacher, and the music teacher have been teaching students how to square dance. And so, they've done a lot of work in their classroom around some music and beats and rhythms, and so, that's going to come to fruition tomorrow night. Next week, we also have the NED show, and the NED show is out of Seattle. It's a character development program, and they're coming to do some character ed with our entire school using yo-yos. And so, they kept calling and calling, and finally, I said, "Sure, let's do this." And so, I looked on their website, and kids are really excited about it, teachers are really excited about it, so I'm hoping that it's going to be as great as it appears. We also had a program startup this year called Girls on the Run, and so, I had a guidance counselor and two grade-level teachers oversee this. And so, they have been working on Tuesdays and Thursdays to do some social skill group work, some self-empowerment, some self-reflection, and they have their 5K on November 21st. So, a bunch of teachers have signed up to run with that. We also have some parents who have gotten off the couch, so to say, and have participated in the training. We also have our first family math game night, which is being organized by some teachers, and the goal is to incorporate some of our everyday math games, but also some board games that we can emphasize and share and use as part of our holiday purchases. And the goal was to tie it back- And the goal was to tie it back to our 5210 initiative of that two-hour screen time of, here's an alternative to play with your child, and to engage in a math activity that will support some of their learning. I think that's really it.
Great. Any questions? Anne?
You mentioned the Alex software, it has just arrived, so you haven't had a chance to use it yet, is that correct?
I've used it in the past, but not here.
Not here, okay, because I went into our sixth grade at the middle school and really saw some very engaged kids and all the components that were just absolutely amazing. So I was excited to see that.
Oh, great.
Great.
Rebecca?
This is more of a comment. I'm really excited to see the math extensions for the students who are above the grade. I think we often don't engage them. We're so busy, you know, meeting federal requirements and making sure everybody gets there, so I'm just, I'm really excited to see that. And I think that's something that district-wide, we could all work on, making sure that every range of student is challenged. So I'm very excited for that. Thanks.
One of the big pieces that we, or that I quickly realized at the beginning of the year, was helping teachers to look at individual students. And so we did a lot of mapping of student profiles and looking at not only their areas of struggles, but their areas of strength. And so what they had to do was a student profile in both math and reading. And from that, it's really brought a lot of conversation around, well, what about those students who are excelling and who are doing well? And from there, I think I've got a lot of parent support around that to really help teachers differentiate, as well as give some support on ways to make that happen. So it's been wonderful.
Kent?
First of all, welcome, and glad to see you tonight. And you come from a different background of how finance has worked and a budget process coming from a private school-type setting.
I actually came from a public charter school, so it's a different worlds with having to constantly find grant money and funding where it wasn't necessarily given by the state at all times.
Yeah, so you might find this easier to a degree.
Some ways.
Some ways. And you don't have a background from last year totally, but what struggles are you seeing, you know, that might interrupt education on the students of Don Darrow?
I think one of our biggest challenges was our student numbers, and with the budget cuts, we had to, I guess, be creative on how we were going to allocate teachers to certain positions. And so in order to meet the needs of keeping the class size down, we have a teacher who's teaching second grade in the morning and then third grade in the afternoon. And so at the beginning of the year, that really created a lot of challenges, just because there wasn't enough time for her to collaborate with the team, the second-grade team, as well as the third-grade team. And so that's something that I'm looking at moving forward for next year, of how we're going to make that happen, so that we can really look at having a full-time teacher teaching second grade and a full-time teacher teaching third grade.
Okay, so that's the biggest challenge, and then again, you know, I expect if things come along, you know, letting Ed know and so forth.
Absolutely.
But it sounds like that's the first one out of the three of us, where because of budget reductions last year and not quite getting where we wanted as a board, sort of a crack in the shell, that if this was a continuing trend, instead of not, it could become more of that type of an example, Kate. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Carol?
I just wanted to say, welcome.
Thanks.
And you seem to be off to a great start, and I just want to thank you for sharing your talents with the Portsmouth School System.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just say a couple of, one, no, I don't have a question. Just one closing comment. I have to say that I'm really impressed by the quality of all the principals from the elementary school. It seems to me in the presentation and in the answers that each of you has a pretty strong grasp of instruction in pedagogy. I could hear the way you talk about it, that you're totally engaged and involved in the classes with the teachers and the curriculum, and I think that's really one of the first great steps towards a really successful district, and I just want to thank you all. It sounds like you know what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dexter?
Not a question for Kate, but really a question for administration. And I'd echo Mitch's comments. I mean, I think we're blessed with three really extraordinary elementary principals, and so I'd congratulate you. But you hear a little bit different in each of the presentations, so one of the questions I have is, what processes are in place to share best practices across the three elementary To what extent, to what extent do we share them? Because there's an incredible amount of work going on in each of them. But I get a sense that it may not be coming out and going across the three schools. And I may be wrong on that, but particularly in the technology area, you hear very different things going on, and it's hard to know if what's going on is based on the interests within that particular school versus more overarching guidance. Unlike the PLC, which is a framework that each of the three areas is using to confront their specific problems.
Yeah, I mean, let me just on a couple of levels address that, and if I can, but I think the, you know, one of the things, and you know, you probably see some evidence just in the presentations tonight, but there's a tremendous amount of sharing on many levels across the three schools, including, you know, the three principals sharing some of the exemplars that exist in their schools. But a lot of the work that we try to do when we bring teachers across, and we don't get to do this as often as we, of course, would like to, but in those days where we bring teachers in in the summer, or some of our full-day in-service days where we bring teachers together across the district, those days are very powerful, and teachers always respond very favorably to them, just because they get a chance to do sort of just what you're saying. And then we're looking at some other ways that we can do that. We didn't talk a lot about science this evening, but one of the things that we've established in that area is utilizing some of the course delivery software that we have, that's called Moodle, that is used sometimes for students to go on and be a part of a class. Teachers have set up a site where they're sharing units in science across the schools, and so we're trying to bring that out so that it can become a usable piece for them. It's not always easy to actually physically sit down with each other, but if we can start utilizing some of the technology tools we have as well to help facilitate that collaboration, that's helpful.
Okay, thanks.
So I'll throw my two cents in.
You don't need to.
All right.
But that's okay.
But I think, I think, you know, in the instance of technology particularly, because I do think we're getting a scale with PLC work, I think we're
Absolutely.
You know, we're tight on the outputs, i.e. the digital portfolio, but it's clear, given some of the constraints of the budget and the way we have to provide teachers, let's say, planning time at Little Harbor and its size, that we had to be more flexible, I think, on the input process. So it's not optimum, it's not ideal, but I think the expectation at the end of the day at each of the schools is consistent. Steve did organize a wonderful, you know, professional development day at the end of the school year, where they had an opportunity to work at grade level across the district. And there's always a demand on the part of teachers to have that opportunity more and more. In fact, it came up today in Focus Monitoring a little bit about things. So any, and it's always a function of time. It's just a, you know, so it's a little resource issue, and it's a little bit of time.
Okay. Thanks.
I have two things, though. One, I think, is we've done a great job of sharing out with Focus Monitoring, but also the math leadership. And so when we go in and we have teachers represented from each building, that's really brought some positive energy back to my building. And I also feel, coming from where I came from and walking into the system, there's a great deal of support, and so that I know that I could go to George and Charlie at any time and ask questions, and so it might be curriculum-based, it might be student-support-based, it might be dealing with a difficult parent. And so just having that, I think, has helped us really come together and share some of those great days and some of those days that you're thinking, okay, you know, let's hopefully the day comes to an end and we start tomorrow with a fresh set of eyes. So it's been great.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you all very much. Appreciate you coming out this evening. Okay, so moving on. District reports, a financial report, Mr. Bartlett?
Okay, in your packets, you had the month-end report for October emailed to you separately. After the packet went out, was a financial narrative and a corrected section for the financial report, but I've also provided those at your space in case you didn't print those out. Overall, everything is well within variance for the budget at this time of year. However, there are a couple of lines which show some variance more than others. Two of them I talked about last, probably for the last two meetings, in that teachers and parents, and that's because the plan that I originally put together for this was based on the normal distribution, start with the beginning of school, for those two lines. However, there was a new program that was started, which I call like the Jump Start Program, and I don't know if that's the official title, the correct one or not, but that's what I gave it. And Mr. McDonough and Mr. Zadrivec can embellish that a little better, if that's not a good title. But in any case, that extra help and focus on students who needed it before school to try to keep them ready in the summer, that was done in the summer months, so it was never originally included in the plan that I put together on the salary side. The one that does concern me a little bit is we had the first season of coaching showing here with an overage, and my take on that at the moment is that that is due to the fact that there were a number of returning coaches that had, you know, a number of years of experience. And so although we have, depending on the number of years of experience, there are different brackets for them. We had a lot of very experienced coaches in that first set of seasons. In some cases, when we get done the next season, we'll find whether that, again, would be offset in the other direction and balance out, but it's a little too soon to tell. In any case, it's not a humongous amount. In the benefit area, the one thing that sticks out again, again, is the dental insurance. Two things there, the, when I put the budget together, I've discovered that the percentage increase that we had talked about was applied to last year's budget. And as you recall, last year's budget was not, was off, so it should have been applied to what I projected for last year's actual to be. So that will continue to be off a little bit for the rest of the year. However, we do have some, we'll have some savings in the FICA line, because the sick-leve-it term line, we don't always know until after school starts how much of that will be going out in terms of actual payments and what percentage of it will go into the stabilization fund. And of course, percentage goes into the stabilization fund, does not have a FICA hit to it yet, so that will help to offset that. I'll keep refining that, and usage patterns sometimes affect that as well. Course reimbursement sticks out a little bit, and that's because, as we've talked about a number of times with the new technology and the influx in technology, we've, Assistant Superintendent Zadrivec has tried to focus some of the group professional development along those lines. So we're having more hit, excuse me, just getting out a second here, lose my voice. So we're having more activity in that account earlier in the year than we would doing it on the traditional way. And let's see, as far as the operating expense components of it, they actually are well within variance for this time of year, based on, you know, historical purchasing patterns change. Usually after you have a couple of freezes, people try to spend it earlier rather than later, so that does have an effect on it, which the averages don't pick up on. So by and large, I'd say that everything is, was within variance and certainly at a controllable level.
Steve, I'd like to go back to the coaching one, and it is one of the first times I've seen the coaching budget go over, and I will be having a record meeting with Russ, and I'll go over it with him. Because my understanding of how the structure of coaching goes is, and I'll just say, the A-sport, or whatever sport it may be, giving no sports a name, is that there's a set number, let's call it $6,000, and that it goes to that sport for, and again, this is just on the coaching side, this is not on the athletic side, is that $6,000 goes for maybe two, three, four coaches, and that that stipends, and it's a stipend, is broken down into, you know, the need of that, because we have a number of volunteer coaches and so forth. It isn't a great number to be over, and anything in our budgets is going to be under a microscope, but my belief and past history with the athletic budgets under coaching was is that those budgets for them were the number, an actual number, and it really shouldn't have too much variance, other than those that are under the teacher's contract that coach, because they fall into a different formula, that they get a little bit of a raise. So again, I'm not sure if we've got a little bit more of a giant monster that we need to look at down the road in the near future, because, again, that's past practice, as far as I understand it. And again, I haven't had a chance to talk to Russ, but we'll see him tomorrow.
Well, if I could just respond a little bit for clarification purposes, the, each sport in the teacher's contract has a set number of positions. Within that position, in the scale that we have, there are three levels of experience, so they vary across. So what you're talking about is what we have allowed, is that based on what they have in the budget for the number of positions, if they end up with a different number of assistants and volunteers, and they want to split that, we don't, you know, we allow them to do that, but that doesn't make it go over. What makes it go over, the one thing that I mentioned, and one thing that you mentioned, which I forgot to mention, is that if you have a preponderance of experienced coaches, it's going to, could it conceivably go over budget if I did not anticipate that there'd be a greater percentage of coaches at that highest step, if you will? The other thing is, if we have more staff members that take the coaching positions, there is an additional stipend if you're a staff member. And if you're an additional staff member and experienced, then the stipend is larger. So I think that in next year's budget, I'm going to have to make an adjustment if it ends up proving that we're going to continue to keep the same coaches, so that they keep moving across the experience level.
And how does it compare that, again, we have a budget, this is a portion of that, that's the overall athletic budget, that, what was it, percentage on target? Or what was it, dollar on target? The overall athletic budget, which includes the buses, the administration, the equipment and so forth, over/under how much?
I don't, you mean for last year?
Yeah.
That's not numbers I carry in my head, to tell you the truth, but I do know that they actually came out without spending all their funds in the athletic budget. And when we have these issues come up in terms of, we estimate for one level of coaching experience and we get another, Russ is very willing to work with us and try to make things balanced, so that overall, as you can see, like with everything else, we still have plenty of time and plenty of budget left to make adjustments, so that we come out where we're supposed to come out.
And that's, again, I think, you know, because the general public, you brought it up, that the coaching's over, but the athletic budget is not over budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Steve, the $109,000 that is adjusted in the 207 budget, does that roll up? You know, the sheet that you provided, you know, that clarifies the 207 budget, does that roll up into the total? Is that part of the total general fund, or is it always tracked separate?
It's always separate.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a fund, too.
Right, I just wanted to, okay.
Okay. No questions? Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Business manager?
He's saying, what the heck is?
Might you [inaudible]
Might you share how that SMART goal with substitutes is tracking, you know, our effort to?
Well, actually, yeah, that's, I should have done that, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me.
That's why he's here.
Sometimes I always worry about reactions to the bad numbers and not the good numbers, just to force a habit, I guess. But in any case, there was a SMART goal that we instituted and have been working on with the K-12 administration team in terms of trying to limit the number of substitute, you know, replacements that we use to get it down. And actually, we are, we are about 15,000 to the, to the good at this point in the year, which ended up for, for a year to date at about a, it was just about a 20% improvement. So that SMART goal is another one that's working.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a couple of policies that are up for a second reading. Volunteers and background investigation community check. So motion to consider and approve the first.
Let's go move.
Second. So any discussions on that?
Do we have second?
Yeah, Dexter's second.
Just that both of these have similarities in them that, as we look at them, it, it comes to the background checks. And I did call Ed this afternoon, and it's been, and I wish I had grabbed the article over last, late last week, early this past weekend, in regards to the background checks, and, and some of it was in the state. I, I hope I can get this article and, and, and give it to the superintendent. Because background checks, first of all, like I, I think I've made them mention that, first of all, I hate that we have to do them. But they're a, a necessary, necessary tool of today's trade in education, just because of unfortunate circumstances. And, and I would never want either background criminal investigations to discourage good candidates from either being volunteers or working with the school system. And the only recommendation, and it's because between the I G O C and the G B C D, is on the very last portion, additional criminal records check, the, the oddity is, is that, as we just talked about, we have paid volunteers in today's world. I'm never quite sure how that works, but even board members are considered paid volunteers, but, and then we have others within the school systems that are not maybe under the word volunteers, and they might not follow there, that additional criminal records, the final portion of this, I, I feel, and I think I made a mention of this last time, the board may require a criminal records check for any employee at any time. I do feel strongly that, and again, things can come back and be adjusted. I remember Nancy Craig started looking at all these policies a number of years ago, and we're not through yet, so, and so it's a live and living product. But I really feel that where it begins, the criminal records checks of any employee, a, it should go comma, and/or other personnel and/or bodies within the school who have contact with students may be asked to have a criminal check. I think we, we, we leave open this oddity. Student teachers have to get this before they come in and spend time in the schools. It's required through theirs, through their programs. Again, we may have people that come in and do long-term maintenance or, or something contractual. And again, if they have student contact, I think that we have to play fair with them all. And again, it's just in the last paragraph, because I know where Ann's pointing to me, I, I know that it says that under the volunteers. But I'm saying, we have others in the system that are not, quote, volunteers. They are other staff members that you may want to have checked out. It's a gray area that I, I have some concerns with that somewhere might get us someday. And I know I brought it up in the past, so I'll leave it as is.
Okay, just, I have a question of clarification to add. So what you're saying is that you think we need to cover ourselves for, for background checks for any possible person, volunteer or not, who's involved in the school department, and it's not covered in this? You're saying that you feel that we need to put something here to cover the unforeseen?
Right. And we may have them. There may be groupings that we have come in, that, again, that long-term type, so we cover it under the volunteer side, and those are volunteers. These are those members that, you know, and.
And it's employees too.
And employees. Again, they may not be employees of the school. We have contractors, we have contracting systems that come in.
It's not our responsibility. That's, that's the vendor's responsibility.
But if you just go, if you go to Manchester, and Manchester had this incident with one of its schools, they subcontracted out their food services.
That becomes the, that becomes the requirement of the contract.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Not, not of the school. So that, you know, the idea of, if we're going to subcontract or directly contract, you know, the specification is going to be laid out in the contract, not, not a requirement of the school. In fact, the, the subcontractor would not allow us that level of reach to be able to do it. You know, it would be something that we would specify in the contract.
Okay, I, I disagree. I think we, we leave an element open out there, again, for anybody that comes in. We're, we're specifying employees, but we're not saying that others, and there have been incidents in the state that have run into this and have put that in their, in their policy. And I'll leave it at that.
So just a quick question.
Yes, I might just add that maybe that's something that needs to be specified in how we contract, you know, for services, you know, within the school, that a, a recommendation or a specification that, you know, we are required to put this in as contractual language.
Rebecca, just one sec, I just want to finish. So, so did this conversation take place at the policy level at all?
Yes, yes, we, committee talked about this.
In terms of making feeling comfortable that the coverage of everybody was included?
Yeah, you know. That everyone was, that everyone who would be in the school would be covered. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Rebecca.
I just wonder, with the, the background checks, what kind of cost this is going to be for the district? Is it going to be above and beyond what we currently pay for this? Do we expect to have, have to be running a lot of background checks? I know at one point, the district required all of our teachers to have master's degrees, and that put our, you know, our pay scale, phew. So is this going to, by doing this, are we going to be digging ourselves into a financial hole? Or is it such a small number of people that it's really not an issue?
Well, the, the criminal records history check, the fingerprinting incurs an expense. There's some 50 some odd dollars for a teacher, and then I think for volunteers, it's a reduced rate, somewhere between 20 and $30, somewhere in that area. So they bear the expense of that.
The teachers and the volunteers have to pay for that themselves?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right. So there's no, there's no additional expense on the part of the district. And I guess I would distinguish that from a background check, which is to say, doing reference checking and, and following up on people, in addition to the fingerprinting requirement, running that through the state police and the FBI. I, I understand Kent's point.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I get it, you know, it's not just an employee, but if anytime the board wishes to have anybody because of a, of a concern, undergo an additional, I, I get that, but I, I'd like to think it's already covered.
I think it is.
But it's easily adjusted, I mean, it could say.
I, I, I'm going to stand my ground, I'm not going to vote for it, because I think we, we, we do not cover simple word phraseology. And there have been incidences within New England and in the state that that has not, because, again, if they have contact, simply anybody that we allow contact with us, and we have two groups we're saying here, we're saying volunteers, and we're saying employees. And I can understand what you're saying, it can be part of the goddamn contract, but what it doesn't cover is those unforeseen things that we have, and I see our student rep, we have people in the building on a continuous basis that have contact with our students that do not have criminal background checks.
Add 500 students.
Well, before we vote on it, would people feel that it would be okay to send this back to the superintendent to take it back to Kathleen, just for clarification on that point? Move forward on a vote and see how that turns out.
It's easy enough to change it, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
We can certainly take it back.
Well, I mean, to Kent's point, I mean, I absolutely agree with Tom, is that
Yeah, I get that too.
From a contractual perspective, presumably, we have a policy somewhere that when we let contracts out, that as part of that contract, they're responsible for representing, that anyone that's involved has gone through a background check. And if it's there.
Well, do we have?
Then that'd be satisfied. But if it's not, to Kent's point, it may be worthwhile to include that language, that we don't, we don't do the background check, because the, the vendor would not allow us to do a background check on their employer.
People.
But as part of the contractual agreement, that they meet all of the appropriate background checks for any of their employees or contractors that are going to be in our school system. I'm, I'm okay with, with thinking about including that sort of language in here. But what I absolutely don't want to do is try and put the school administration, to give them the responsibility of conducting that background check. If that doesn't work, it's inappropriate. You can't do it.
Contractors can bring in different people at different times without our notification. It's a, they're fulfilling a, you know, a task, and it's not based on an employee. So we, we could completely, you know, miss somebody as well as, you know, emburden the, the administration with, you know, requirements that they can't fulfill.
So where in the contractual language would this actually appear, if it were to appear in the contract? I mean, would, would this kind of a phrase be in a, in a standard? In all the contracts, yes.
As a general rule, for example, for us, because we're not a self-op bus service, there is a clause in the contract that, that I've had in every one I've done in either other lifetimes too. But I know Peter had it in it, because we used a very similar contract model, that they will do, they will, they are responsible for assuring us and, and conducting the appropriate background checks for any of the drivers. And if we were to contract out food service, that would be in their contract. So by and large, you know, that's the standard operating procedure for most business administrators in Vermont, New Hampshire, that I know of, and Maine as well.
And I want to specify, I want to be clear here. I'm not just saying contracts. I, I've given example, and I hope it's, it's one that doesn't get misconstrued out there, because we, we have a great program that was actually announced tonight, that we do swim safes, okay? Now, I'm not sure how we do that. And again, this is, again, an example. There is no allegations here, there's no nothing. We send a group of students into a, a facility such as a pool, whether it be the Portsmouth Pool, whether it be the Y, whether it be a private pool, because they give us a great service. What if, again, criminal background checks on that, there aren't. And again, that's not a contract.
Can you be specific, what if what? Can you be specific about what?
We're sending, Leslie, we're sending students to go to, off to a site and have a long-range agreement of having instruction done, okay?
So are you suggesting that the instructors at the pool should have background checks?
Why would we not do that if we don't, if we're telling everybody who volunteers at the school they have to?
But not every volunteer has to have a background check. There's two different categories of volunteers.
And they would, if you looked at the way that reads, they would fall into that because of their instruction time with it. If you looked at the volunteer side, and that's why I say the two of them kind of cross over, they would probably need to have a background check.
But they're not employees of the school, and doesn't that go back to the contract issue we were just talking about?
But we're allowing the safety of our children to be taken out at a time. And again, that's just an example. We do this continuously. And, and if we're saying to our volunteers, they have to have this type of background check, and again, because they have that daily contact, you know, prayer phrasing how it reads, I think, again, a simple one line there, trying to make sure we cover ourself.
Dexter. Can we ask the state how they address that? Because the reality is, if we put that in our policy, then we're going to hold the administration accountable for that.
This does come from the state.
And the, and the examples that have been suggested, I, I'm not sure the administration is in any position of being able to, to hold those parties accountable for anything. So if, if, if this is the state model, and this is how the state does it, then I'd be reluctant to put something in our policy that we can't be confident that the administration can deliver on.
On the back are the legal references that are all a part of this, so that's part of the process of making these policies.
Should we table them?
Yeah.
I'll move to table.
Yeah, till the next meeting, if anyone, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. I think it's just to get a little more information from Kathleen. I think Dexter's point is, is a good point. If we add new language to this, does it water down and make it more difficult to enforce? And maybe we can get a legal opinion on it. Ann had a question. Oh, Ann?
Well, it's not a question so much as, I think we, at NSO 50, we face the same concern, and designated volunteers are just as much a black hole as the contracted, you know, services. Because as we all know, in these small schools, and with familiarity over time and during the year, you may have some volunteer be sick or whatever, and suddenly someone's taking their place, and they're not a designated volunteer. So that's something that, you know, we're constantly being aware of in terms of who comes into the classroom, and maybe, you know, is working with a group of kids, gets pulled into another room, and is, so may have to be very clear that those designated volunteers are all, you know, have been, have had their background checks as well, because they're in the building.
And we have done that. And, you know, the difference between the two policies as I read them, is, is volunteer can be let go, if you will. It's not like there's just cause or anything. You can just remove a volunteer from offering their services to the school.
For any reason.
The, the phrase that we're getting hung up on in that policy is the requirement for an additional background check, i.e., they've already gone through a criminal background check, but you have some reason to suspect something has happened since the last episode, and the board wishes to have that resolved immediately. That's really what we're talking about here. But, but nonetheless, I'll take it to Kathleen. She's coming to our next board meeting as we introduce some new policies as well, so, and I'll get her take on that, that's fine. Do, do I need to take a roll call vote on a table motion here? Or can it be a voice vote?
Give me a voice vote.
Okay. So any other conversations on that? So all in favor of tabling it to the next board meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed table? Okay, thank you. Next policy.
Well, I think.
I'm sorry.
That's the one I think you tabled, is background investigation.
Right, but we didn't vote on volunteers. Any conversation on the volunteers? Okay, so let's take a voice vote on that. Roll call? I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Okay, sure. Carol Chelman?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Dexter Legg?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Hayward?
Yes.
Very good. New business?
Can I, can I just pause one sec?
Oh, sure.
I saw that you passed up the bullying policy. Do you want to just, should we talk about that for just a minute? About, I mean, since we didn't have anybody here to talk about tonight, it seems like...
You want to do that now, or you want to hold that for your sub, policy subcommittee?
Either one, doesn't matter. Since we were talking about it.
Let's do it.
Okay. Do you want me to do it, or you want to do it?
Yeah, go for it.
All right. This is the new bullying policy. We had invited parents and anybody from the community tonight to talk with us about concerns, if they, or ideas, comments, anything they wanted to talk about, about this policy. So we didn't have any, anybody comment on it, which I guess is a good thing, because maybe it's not as upsetting to, you know, maybe it's not something that parents are feeling as, is happening as much as the news says it is. But, so basically, this is the state policy that we have to have enacted, I think, by the first of January, is that right? So you could take some time and read through it. Kathleen is coming to our... Kathleen is coming to our next meeting, is that right, to talk about this? And if you have comments, things you want to talk about, Dexter?
Leslie, how'd you get the word out to parents?
Every, at every single PTA or PAC meeting, it was mentioned, and the principal of each school stood up and talked, and...
And actually provided a draft.
Provided a copy of the policy, and talked with parents about it, and invited them here. It went out in separate newsletters, by email, lots of different ways. It was, I think it was in your letter.
Yeah, we sent it to parents as a PDF, it's on the website, I wrote a little bit in my superintendent's update. So I think we've done a good job of getting notice about the policy out there.
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. New business?
Yes, I would recommend the school board approve a request from Rebecca Remson, who is expecting her second child. She would like to take unpaid leave effective January for the remainder of this school year to attend upon her birth of her new child.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we move to committee reports. JVC.
So, I updated you two weeks ago, and since then, there's not a lot of new things to report. I can report that we continue to make progress firstly on construction documents, and they're well over 80% complete now, driving towards completion by December 1st, I believe. And at the last JVC meeting, the committee continued to go through a value management process identifying potential cost savings or cost avoidance items. The committee came up with a list of well over a million dollars of possible cost savings without affecting any of the program. That will continue to be refined as the construction documents are created, and then eventually go out to bid. Still on target to go out to bid in January, and that's when we really know what this is going to cost, and not until then. So I guess what I'd characterize is the JVC is optimistic in the work they've done, and the work that Gilbane and JCJ have done in refining the costs, and refining the building, and still keeping the integrity of the quality and the program in place. I don't know if Leslie or Ann, you have anything to add to that?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. And then the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on efficiencies. Who's reporting on that?
Well, we did, we met, what was it, two weeks ago now, and we're finalizing the outcomes of what this committee has done in the last four months, five months. And we had a draft that was given to us by the city manager, we looked at it, we discussed it, we sent that back with some revisions. I missed the bus part, but I'll tell you, the city library and the school librarians, I think astonished individuals of the accomplishments that we currently have. I think with the right resources, there's a lot more that they could do to be shared resources between the library committees, or the city libraries and the school libraries, the local libraries, and the state libraries. And again, there was discussion prior, I was late for the coast buses coming, but that seems to be a little bit of a gray area from what I had read and talked about, talked with afterwards. But I think the nice thing is, is that we do have a document that will be coming to both the city council and the school board in the next month or so.
Any questions, anyone else?
Well, I think there's one other item that's floating out there, and that is the notion of the possible move of central office to city hall, and I think that there has not been a conversation at the board level about this. The information, as I understand it, is that the Cybold Building has been renovated with federal dollars for nonprofits, and that that commitment extends through 2018. The RFP has gone out, and we're in the process of interviewing firms for the K-5 facilities assessment, so there's been a request to kind of look at that as part of, you know, a long-term capital improvement, and whether it makes sense to take the Little Harbor School and make that exclusively, you know, instructional space, because you won't get beyond the original footprint, and then maybe have some assessment done as part, you know, looking here, and what would need to happen to actually move central office there. So that's the conversation, I think, what you're going to find in the report. I know we haven't had a lengthy agenda discussion about that, but that's kind of what's being recommended as part of this report. And the coast buses, quite clearly, it was clear that they're just going to ride on Route 1. Again, it's federal dollars that help support that. But the good news in all of that was, there's going to be some effort by their board to actually look at providing a student discount to our middle school and high school students. And so maybe to mitigate the loss of the late bus, there's an opportunity for it to stop, and they could get on at a reduced rate and travel on the particular route it has to travel. But it's a good way to teach some sustainability and kind of, you know, foster a partnership. But it's not going to be a substitute for running the high school bus routes.
And patience for the kids, because it will take time.
Right.
Coast buses, it's a long ride.
It's an hour, I guess, from one.
Yes.
So I just have two quick questions. One is, so the, Kent, you were mentioning something, a collaborative, shared relationship between the city librarians, school librarians regarding like database resources and collective purchasing to save money in that way?
Purchasing wasn't as much as a discussion, I think it's one that actually had some eyes on it, but for the future and so forth, but there is some things that done. But it was more inter-sharing of the library and the resources. We talked about the summer times, the downtimes of the school libraries and so forth, the book exchanges, or the students, students and general public looking for certain, whether they be books, whether they be magazines, whether they be computer-type information, database-type information that is currently shared. Both sides did an outstanding job. Mary Ann really opens the door up, I think, for future opportunities. Little discussion, keeping it a separation as the middle school is being built there, that this is not an extension that, you know, of the library from the middle school on over. So, there was a little bit of discussion that way, that they are two separate things, but can share resources.
Okay. And one quick question for Ed. So you were saying with the money that was used to renovate the building here next to city hall, wouldn't, there was some arrangement until 2018, so even if everybody thought it was a great idea, nothing would happen until 2018?
That's my sense of what the report out was.
We can't, yeah.
Okay.
That's what we think.
Okay.
And then we'll probably have to renovate.
All right. Anything else on that? All right. Any last-minute thoughts before we adjourn? Okay? We adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.